If I can have everybody's attention, we're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. What you have is a work-study session for May 7th, 2024, in regards to short-term rental workshop. We don't have a set agenda. This is going to be more informational for the commission. We have no plans on doing anything today that is going to be putting codes or anything into place today. This is for work-study, but with that, the commission has been discussing up here, and we're going to go ahead and allow for a public comment upfront if you want to make a comment. We hope though, if you are to make comments, not to repeat yourself. We'll try and keep this simple because we're going to keep the same rules as we do for our regular meetings, which is three-minute maximum per person, 15 minutes total, so that's five. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and open it up. If there's anybody in the room that feels it's necessary to want to give us a brief minute now. If not, I'll end up going to the Zoom and asking them. Then I ask you to please come up, announce your name, and perhaps where you're from.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I've seen you again. To remind you, my name is Mike Mawston. I'm a full-time realer at Windermere and a waterfront specialist. I am here to support short-term rentals with reasonable regulation. And with that, I want to tell you a story. In the eighties, I worked for Apple Computer. I had a manager who said, "I don't have policies." That's because, it's not because I don't want things done. For example, I don't want anyone to kill a goat in my foyer. And if I wrote a policy to that, the first thing I would do is find a dead cow in the bathroom. I urge you to be careful on how you do this, not what you do. The first thing that I think that you should do is take a look at defining short-term rentals. What we have now does not seem to be adequate. I've looked at six different counties, four in the state of Washington, two in the state of Oregon. Some counties are having a better time of it, some are not. And I think it is because of the way that they define short-term rentals. For example, in this county, there are 5,000 or so people that live on saltwater. As of last year, 429 lived here full-time. That means 90% or so don't live here. That means some 4,500 or so of the saltwater owners have the possibility of being a short-term rental. This county is particularly vulnerable because our prices are so much lower than the surrounding counties. The kind of things that I see, because I live on Pecker and Pass, these are the things that I see in the short-term rentals, is that the rental itself has a limit of eight people that can stay there. However, they bring their friends in, they pitch tents, and fill up the entire place with 35, 40 people. It becomes a big party. And there's nothing that they have done wrong because there's still only eight people in the rental. So you have to define what a short-term rental is, whether it is a small cabin, whether it is a large place. I have found that there are particular problems, specifically in Pacific County, where there are concentrations of short-term rentals. The question then in front of you is, are you going to space these things out? You know, not have a concentration of short-term rentals in any one place. There's the question of security and safety. I encourage you to-
Give me a few more seconds to close up, but-
I encourage you to have landlines on these places. I also encourage you to have an annual fee that is then dedicated to short-term rentals, not that it's shared across the county. I also encourage you, please, to then take all the short-term rentals that you have registered and put them on a map so that realtors like myself can find out where these things are so we don't put the concentration of short-term rentals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to, yes, please, go ahead.
Nice to see you again, commissioners. Thanks for calling me, Kevin. My name's Daniel Hanson, and I live in Union, about a half-mile from Alderbrook Resort. I'm living on a piece of property that my grandfather settled in the 30s. And I have a short-term rental. It is a log cabin built by my grandparents while they built their main home. And this has been upgraded and remodeled, so it has all the up-to-code electrical and plumbing and everything. All it has is a fold-out couch, a dining, a small dining table, a kitchenette, and a bathroom with a flush toilet and a shower. That's it. That's very different from a home that I live in next to it, and I would be renting out a room or part of the shared facilities, the kitchen or bath, versus the third category that Mike talked about is someone that doesn't live in it, but they rent it out as a short-term rental. And I think it's important that there's distinctions between those three types of short-term rentals in the regulations. Whatever the regulation comes out, whatever it is, that those three different scenarios are taken into account by the regulation. For me, this is, I've been with Airbnb for 10 years, and I've had nothing but great experiences. They pay a lodging tax to Mason County for me. This is a supplement to my retirement income. And I'm sure I'm not unique in that regard. There are some people that are just making money hand over fist because of how they price their facility or their short-term rental. We've kept our prices very reasonably low compared to others in the same market. And I can see what other Airbnbs are charging. And we're not on the water, and we have a great view of the mountains and the water. And the last point was, I already made it. This is a supplement to our retirement income.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so now we'll be going to Zoom, but let me make something very clear. Again, we are not voting on anything today. This is just a work-study. So if you got something you want to say, you know, please keep it as brief as possible. But at the same time, you may not even have to say anything because we're just getting ready to look at how to do these things and how we're setting it up. With that being said, if there's somebody who's on Zoom that feels it's necessary to speak, you'll be given an opportunity right now. I'll ask you first to raise your hand. If you're not a raise your hand on Zoom and you really, really want to speak, now is your time. I see no hands raised. Is there anybody that feels that doesn't know how to raise their hand, that feel that it's absolutely necessary to speak at this time? If so, I'm going to allow you the opportunity to unmute yourself and say your name, and I will call on you accordingly. Unmute yourself if you feel you need to communicate right now. All right, none. We're going to go ahead and move forward with our workshop- And go into a presentation. Mark, who do you have leading the presentation?
Marissa.
Marissa? Hi, Marissa. Go ahead and kick us off.
Okay, let me unmute myself here. One second. Let me share my screen here.
Thank you.
And you see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, short-term rentals. And just a little overview of the project roadmap for people who may have just joined us today and are not familiar with the process so far. We had a survey on the general themes and concerns around short-term rentals back in November that opened, and it closed on January 12th. We got over 1,500 responses, and then we brought those general themes from the responses to a first work session with the VOCC on February 6th. Then in between that work session and now, and with information from that work session, staff began to form some, a very first early draft regulations. And then we originally had the second work session scheduled for April 23rd, but had to reschedule till today. And then hopefully, if we get some further direction from the VOCC today, we can take the draft to the PAC, most likely June being the earliest date. And then, of course, we will have additional meetings from there depending on that first work session with the PAC. So prior to the last work session, the commissioners, staff, and public all had access to that public survey on, the public survey responses on the topic. We also received written comments before that work session, and commissioners have been provided with those comments as well as comments received up through April 29th is when I put a cutoff deadline. But I do know that a few people might have reached out to Mackenzie to get their comments also in the packet, and she was kind enough to include those. So then we got feedback from the commissioners between that first work session and February until now. And what we got from that feedback is that no outright ban on short-term rentals. At our last meeting, the commissioners did not express wanting to limit the number of short-term rentals in the county, whether it was in a particular area or zone, though there was a mention of a tier system. So a lot of counties have a tier or they call it a type for their short-term rental system. Then we also heard that specific structures cannot be used as a short-term rental, and we need to define what that is and what is and isn't a short-term rental. Going forward here, we will need to do that. Other items that we heard was initial permit issuance requirements for fire safety, health standards, and building code compliance inspection. That outstanding code violations be resolved before permitting, and that neighbors within 300 feet be notified when a permit for a short-term rental is applied for. And we also talked about property management plans being on file at the county. And some details of those project management plans would include typical rules of conduct, which would also be posted in a very obvious place in the short-term rental. That the local operator be responsive to guests, and that contact is available 24 hours and is able to respond physically within three hours. Septic issues, environmental impact, and occupancy of two per bedroom plus two additional people per short-term rental. So very concerned about occupancy limits and those effects on our septic systems, especially in the shoreline. Poaching on the shoreline, better transparency by the short-term rental operators on harvesting regulations, and whether the owner actually owns tidelines for harvesting and what the boundaries are regarding those tidelines in the harvesting areas. A waste pickup schedule, requiring garbage collection, parking issues, being responsive to problems within a certain amount of time, and good neighbor guidelines, which kind of go hand-in-hand with the rules of conduct. The other thing we heard was an annual permitting process, process for revoking the permit if needed, and a clear complaint path outlined. Then the current draft regulations you have in front of you, I'm taking into account the commissioners' input, RCW 6437, which was written into law on July 28th of 2019, and then the current provisions of Mason County Code and staff additions that are based on knowledge of our administrative practices, and of course, the common structuring that you can see in a lot of other counties in how they structure their short-term rental code. In the draft regulations provided by staff, there are comments and questions that you can see in that sidebar. And these are, oh, sorry, additional comments and questions for consideration. The, this slide is several areas that staff needs additional input from the commissioners on, and how do we define short-term rentals? Are there any structures, temporary or permanent, that do not qualify in that definition? I know that some jurisdictions indicate that the short-term rental must be on the owner's primary, must be the owner's primary dwelling or legally established accessory dwelling unit. Some allow in a residential accessory building as well. So if you think of a garage, and some people use the main dwelling unit as a short-term rental with a bunkhouse over a garage, I've seen that allowance before. Some jurisdictions exclude RVs, tents, temporary or mobile units from that definition. And then they typically have to regulate those temporary structures in a different part of the code. Should this apply to the whole of the county or just the rural areas? So, you know, do we want to apply this to urban growth areas as well? Are we just concerned with the rural lands? And then types or tiers of rentals that was indicated as an interest last time, last work session. Many jurisdictions outline the first tier or type of a short-term rental. And that first tier is usually with an operator residing on-site. And then the next tier or type is usually with the operator residing off-site. And sometimes there's an additional lever, level, sorry, that incorporates additional requirements and higher levels of review. And sometimes these are short-term rentals located in sensitive areas, or they're short-term rentals that have a higher occupancy limit. Some counties require conditional use permitting for a higher occupancy short-term rental. And of course, that, you know, our conditional use permitting, of course, has a higher level of review than our administrative permits. So in the draft regulations also outline some additional requirements that other jurisdictions you apply to short-term rentals with a higher occupancy. Another area that we need to look at is the number of short-term rentals per parcel. Currently, our rural residential zoning allows for a main residence and an ADU. So that is potentially two short-term rentals right there if we're limiting to a dwelling unit. Occupancy limits, the current code in regard to occupancy limits and septic system approval. Occupancy limits shall be based on the number of bedrooms approved for the qualifying structure in relation to the onsite sewage system approved by Mason County Environmental Health Department. And then it reiterates the occupancy limits shall be limited to two persons per bedroom plus the two additional persons per short-term rental. And then currently, the code just outlines or references environmental health part of the code that Mason County Code, Chapter 6, which talks about operation and maintenance requirements. Some jurisdictions require that the system be inspected and the report received by the county prior to issuing a permit, and then indicate how many years they have until an additional O and N inspection is required. And the Mason County Code that, Chapter 6, refers to the WAC, WAC 246, 272A, 270, in regard to inspection frequency. So that's, our current code refers to the WAC on inspection frequency. But there are some jurisdictions that outline something more specific for the short-term rental program. Then the other issue is additional parking requirements other than what's in the draft. Maybe beneficial that the short-term rental applicant provide location of parking in a site plan to avoid not only access issues but drain-filled, environmental-sensitive issues as well. Solid waste handling. Do we need any other additional requirements other than what's already in our code in 6.72? And that code just, it really just defines what kind of containers you're putting garbage in, and that you have service twice a month, I believe. But some jurisdictions, you know, they require you to show proof that you're actually getting service at that location. But currently, our code just refers to containers, and that specifies for residential garbage, the two times a month service. And then initial fire safety and health inspections, that was also indicated as desired prior to permitting. And if you saw the note in there by our director, there is a concern with that just in having the capacity to do that. I know she did suggest a few things to discuss alternatives, such as putting there a clause of subject to inspection prior to issuance of a permit, or maybe inspect a certain percentage or number that's pulled randomly, so there is no bias. So a little bit of concern there on capacity to do those inspections. I know that some jurisdictions have self-certification forms. Some of them have had issues with those, that they'll fill it out, but you know, there'll be a random audit, and some of those things aren't, you know, actually done. But I know that Chelan County has moved to doing an annual inspection, and they have a $100 fee for that inspection. And it's typically the fire marshal who does that inspection. But with that fee, they've actually been able to hire an additional employee that helps with those inspections. So they have had to revert to a, to a annual inspection. And then in addition to that, some staff recommendations from the planning and administrative side. There was some discussion from our staff group about documentation of their tax permit for renewal of the permit. So getting documentation that they are actually remitting that to the correct state department prior to issuing a permit, and then having a permit that's good for a calendar year, and having application windows for renewals and new. And this is really to alleviate staffing burden, which I think is going to be really important, especially at the beginning of, you know, implementing, if we do implement short-term rental regulations in the permitting process. And that would be having a different window for those who are permitting new and for those renewing during the year. And then they would submit for their renewal or their new the year before the permit would be good. So it's a year before. So if they submitted in 2025, it would be for the permit in 2026. And then I had a couple of comments from our fire marshal too. And those were in regards to smoke alarms being installed per the WAC code there outlined. And then fire extinguishers that are serviced annually that meet that rating. And then he talks about them being in the kitchen and for multi-story units, one on each additional floor. That's serviced annually, and let's see if we have anything else. He also had some recommendations for our, an example rules of conduct. So, which I completely agree, it would be good to have an example rules of conduct attached to probably a permit application. So it makes it a little bit easier for our applicants knowing what's expected and what should be in there, such as things like the burn ban hotline, quiet hours, you know, and a bunch of those items that are listed in the draft regulations so far. But beyond that, as mentioned earlier, the commissioners were provided with public comments, as well, some of those comments were specifically about the draft regulations. So early on, we had comments from the public that were specifically about their experiences with short-term rentals. And of course, the draft regulations haven't been out too long, but we did get some comments as well on those draft regulations and the specifics of those. So there is a variety in the comment packet. And then staff also provided, it was desired that we have some fees in mind. What kind of fees would, you know, a project, a program like this entail? I think it's a little too early since we don't really know the scope of the program yet. But I did provide some examples from several different jurisdictions of what they are charging currently for their new permits, their renewals, and also if they're requiring inspections as well. Other than that, the goal for this work session is to start a discussion on those items for consideration, especially listed on that Slide 5, as well as any additions commissioners may have. So I'm going to stop sharing and see if they have any questions.
Commissioners, any direct questions? Okay, ah, makes me wonder if that's presentation, if it wouldn't be wise for us to just take one piece at a time right now and just discuss it with them writing down what they're hearing from us and maybe how to move forward a little bit with it. You good with that? Okay, so one of the things we're talking about doing is just throwing out one line at a time, one piece. We discuss it amongst the commission. You put down a straw dog for us to look again in the future of what that looks like from what we're talking about. Are you following me on that?
Yes.
Okay, so we could start at different places. If you want, you can go right down the line, or we can just start right in the beginning of maybe the idea of what definition of short-term rental looks like.
That would be great. That's, yes, that's-
Any feedback on?
Okay, what, you want to go first?
So, Marissa, maybe can you share your screen again? And just for everybody that's on Zoom and in the room, they can see kind of the draft ordinance that we all have in front of us?
Yes.
The full screen?
It's not-
There we go.
Yeah, but not the ordinance.
It's Chapter 17.100.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you, did you want to see-
The draft code? Is that what you wanted to see?
Yeah, that way, that way, everybody can see the definition that your draft proposes.
I thought we were talking about the, okay, one second.
Yeah, no problem. The other one is good too. It's a good reference back, but I think-
While she's looking, we can try to talk about it a little bit. Go ahead. I like the broadness of it. It's very simplistic. I do think that we might want to consider some type of tiering. I don't know what yet, but I can, one of the things that stuck out to me is if something's extremely large, then we do need to consider a special use permit. Because at some point, you can't deny it's a full-fledged commercial operation, and it's in a rural residential area. And if it's that- And if it's that big, and I don't know what that size is, we should consider that for a special use permit uh with uh other restrictions and stuff involved. Um as for the smaller ones, I don't know where I'm at versus uh just leasing out a bedroom. It's still, was gonna have the same type of restrictions, they could still bring people in and it's just, it's gonna be easier for the owner to maintain. Because they don't have the people with all the vehicles and stuff like that uh coming into it. So I know that I'd at least have, like to see two tiers, if not three.
Yeah, I, I, so I, I agree, I think the definition in here, I'm good with the definition that's proposed. Under seventeen point one hundred point oh two oh.
And it's up on the board right now for you.
Um and I, I, you know, we have two tiers currently in the draft. Um one that focuses on, you know, um renting out a bedroom at an ADU versus, you know, the full facility. And, and it does call out, you know, where the owner resides relative to that rental. And so um if there is maybe an option for a third tier, you know, to look at things that are, are larger. Um I would be open to that conversation. But so far with both of those issues, I think the draft is moving in the right direction.
Yeah, the, and I, I like the idea of separating out owner occupied versus, as you're mentioning. There does make, there is a difference there for when it comes time to enforce things.
And then if you look at the RCW sixty-four thirty-seven zero one zero, um it has definitions according to what the legislature thinks that they should be. Um but it does talk about a dwelling unit that is occupied by the owner for at least six months and has fewer than three rooms. So there's, there's quite a few definitions in here already, which they do kinda line up with ours.
Well, let's, let's uh jump onto that one part about whether or not it could or should be if it's not uh currently lived in by an owner. I think a lot of these people bought them for the purpose of doing that and not actually as their first living. Uh and I'd hate to just restrict it from them, then since that's what they bought it for and just say, hey, you can't do that.
Oh yeah, for sure.
So I don't know that I wanna restrict it to just owner operators that are living there. What are you thinking?
I don't think that we should.
Yeah.
Okay, so no, we're, we're all in agreement on that, we don't think it should be restricted. Cause I did see that some of the stuff that they've talked about in some of the other counties is whether or not they actually are an owner operator, whether it's doable or not. I don't think you have to be, but I, I think the rules have to be strict enough though to make sure that, cause if you're not there, you have to have somebody there. We've talked about that also, or somebody uh within a certain amount of time away.
Well, when you use the, like the, the VRVO or the Airbnb apps, they, they, they are ready. I pulled up a few up on here too, but they are, they have guidelines that you, that whoever rents the, the unit, they have to follow those guidelines. I don't think there's, oh, I would say all the ones that I've been to have been very um user-friendly and well, well, if, if you, if you respect the place, then you're not gonna have any issues. But I think the, the problem comes to, from the people that don't, don't
Yeah.
respect or follow the guidelines.
And I agree with you, I think the rule is there for those that don't, not for the ones that do. But uh the only way we can have an impact is on the person that owns it, is operating it.
Yes, so, so how do you, how do you enforce that?
Well, that's a feat to, to sign on, become a part of it. Uh certain guidelines, if they violate the guidelines, uh some of them have them to be taken off the list if they've done three. I think that'd be excessive unless we tiered what that three would look like. Uh but having a fine on them when it's violated and after so many times they do lose their ability to do it if they can't control their, their users. Because of the, the thing I look at for myself is the impact it's having on the neighbor. You know, we, no matter how you look at it, it is a business and it's a business right in a residential area, whether we like it or not, that's the reality of it.
So how do we now, cause I know that they, they are supposed to be registered as a business through, I think it's DOR. And what do we have in place now to enforce that or to make sure that a recording system?
Yeah, I think that's why we're doing this, is cause we don't have that as a restriction right now uh for the county especially, cause we don't even have anything for them to be a part of. If we do it this way, we'll set it up and I think that's a requirement that we definitely want. And I know our staff has put it down there where they can be grandfathered automatically by showing they already have that. But even being grandfathered doesn't mean you're free of the rules or anything else, you just have to, you can just be open quicker, in my opinion and.
Yeah, cause I mean, we don't, as a counter, we don't have a BNO tax or a business license process for any business, I mean, you know. So it is, I mean, it is all kind of what they're doing with DOR and they don't necessarily communicate that to us. And I know we, we receive money from a lot, for logic tax, I mean, so there's maybe a, a way to go kinda work backwards and figure out from there. But, but in terms of like, um you know, in terms of consequences for not maintaining, you know, your, your property the right way. And I don't know, there is any recourse at this point, I mean, that's the sort of the point of the conversation.
Yeah, there hasn't been, that's.
Other than what we have in total already, right?
You know, we do have some neighbors here that have taken their neighbor to court and they have different court restrictions. For example, if they, if they don't, if they park a car on their property, they have to pay five hundred dollars, literally. That's been established by the court to set it up that way. But we can't expect every single resident to have to go through that and then those that do it, I just got a phone call today about them. Uh they're actually scared to death to turn it in because it's immediate. So that means that's the requirement on it, is that it has to be done immediately. They do it immediate, they're still there and now they know that they just got a fine five hundred dollars on their credit card. And now they're pissed at the neighbor that called in on them, even though they shouldn't have been there. So you know, if the courts are doing that, we definitely could make things a little bit easier and put it on the owner. Uh instead of the owner just putting it directly on them. They are responsible for making sure they not just park into their neighbor's driveway so they can't even get into their own house. And if we don't put it on the owner, who are we gonna put it on? So, cause you know, we can't find the individual, just like you wouldn't in a hotel.
Right.
So on this one first, uh the definition, we'd say that this is pretty close, maybe we'd like to see a, an additional look uh for addition to the definition. To include, uh to include a, a tier one, uh tier two and perhaps a tier three for special use.
Under the types?
Yeah. Okay, any other parts of this one? Yes. Oh wait, uh no, if it's somebody online, I wanna, no, I see Don K though, I wanna, I wanna point out, uh Don, I appreciate that you wanna speak. But we had our opportunities in the beginning, now this is a work-study session, there is no more public comment at this time. So I apologize, but now we're just talking amongst each other, so we will not be calling on you, just to let you know. Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, so um so there is interest in
A possibly a tier three for, for higher occupancy.
I'd like to let me see what that looks like, because some of these, I do know of one that literally does, I can't remember exactly what's that. But they literally do weddings with a lot of people that are standing there and stuff like that. So that is a very special use and I'm talking, there was a lot. So I'd like to see what that looks like as a tier. You've seen those before, yeah?
Yeah, are, are, are those considered um short-term rentals?
I think they would probably, if there're gonna be a venue like that, they should be probably triggered by a special use permit anyway. And with that, probably you'd have a question for Kel, regards to what threshold or the trigger is for that.
I believe the threshold for a special event permit is like three thousand people. So if, so I could potentially see the need to modify another ordinance.
Yeah. And the way, and just so the people know that are at home, uh the conversation that we're having is not with the public, I apologize. We're having conversations with our staff who are here and we're asking them questions, they're giving us answers. Uh one of the ones that I remember were brought to us, I believe you were still here when that, we were talking about it, uh it didn't fall underneath anything. We didn't have a provision for it that was any different than just a short-term rental. But I think that we should consider having some type of restriction, at least be able to keep track of that.
So I wonder if, in that specific
Example?
Example, thank you.
I get sucked in.
Thanks, I like that. Through DOR, I wonder if they have a specific type.
I don't know, but we can do it with regu- we can do it with regulations on, on limits on how many people we have in a building. If it's a, you know, I'm just throwing this out, I don't know. But if you've got, you know, if you're looking at ten people that are residing there at one time, after that, it should maybe be a different tier. Uh because if we do it how, according to the other ones, it'd be two per bedroom plus a living room like that. But at a certain point, and I'm just throwing out a number, it could be twenty, it could be thirty. But that other place, that was literally a lot more than that. But I, I think we should at least consider it and see what it is and then we hold them to a whole much greater standard. I could think of the safety aspect alone, sitting near or faced, looking at our fire marshal sitting right in front of us. It's hard for me not to realize or recognize that you start putting thirty people, forty people in a place. You've got some fire dangers that are occurring right there and a- able to access or get exit uh out of there. Uh there's a reason why we do that, we have those inspections in our buildings here in downtown and, and in Belfair, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to a, a, looking at a third type. Um I think the bulk of everything we're gonna do is gonna fall into the two types that they have in there. But you know, in, in other cases, if there are alternatives to look at them, I'd, I'd be willing to look at that.
Same with you?
Yeah, yeah.
Does that, do you understand that one? Did it make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Where do you wanna go next, guys?
Ian.
Yes.
Sorry, just one thing I think is really important for us to address is the definition of what a short-term rental is. And the, you can see in the comments that Marissa has there, are, are you going to allow recreational vehicles tents or other temporary tents?
No. That's a great point, I, I do think we have to worry about that, cause I know that we have regulations. One of the things with folks, uh we've both been on the planning commission for years, so we have different types of knowledges. Uh we do know that RV uh camps have a special regulation and you can't just open it anywhere. So if you're gonna allow for anything like that, that's gotta be the same provision. But it, it definitely needs to be licensed, but we gotta keep track of how many that is as well. Because anything over a certain amount, that's gonna be a straight-out uh campground with, with a different regulation again. So do we even want to allow a campground with uh under the short-term rental or is that something we wanna keep separate? We're gonna be dealing with it anyway, so I think we probably should include it in some way for short-term.
Well, even then, so you, you're putting tents on the property, some, they're using the restroom somewhere, so the septic's gonna get used.
Yep. Well, again, we can say no, that's.
I know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, at least in my mind, I think placing a restriction on that would be important. Just because, you know, you have your, you have your occupancy based on bedrooms and the septic, what it's been permitted for. Big loophole if you can show up with four other people in tents, uh you know, who then are still using that. So I think, you know, kind of in the, in the spirit of things, I don't, I, I think there should just be an outright restriction on
On tents.
Uh you know, any kind of
Tents and RVs.
Yeah, I mean, any kind of um expansion beyond the occupancy limit, you know, should, should be restricted. Whether you're, whether you got people sleeping in the hallways in the house or in a tent in the yard.
Okay, what about RVs, though, that have their own systems?
I don't know, see, that, that, that kind of opens a door that, I don't know that I wanna go down.
Well, believe me, I'm not throwing anything bad or good towards it, uh this will just be a structure for her to bring back to us. So right now, what I'm hearing is a, a restriction on including tents or anything under the, the provision for short-term. Which is gonna have an impact, cause I think there are places that throw out tents and stuff as part of their provision, so. Uh but uh you want the same restriction on RVs or just the same, same restriction of RVs on addition to a, a residence?
Did, Ian, since you brought it up, I mean, did you have any suggestions on how to approach this?
There's, I mean, there's, there's multiple ways we could do it. On, on one hand, there's already plenty of venues that facilitate glamping, as they call it. So it's an industry, it's there already. Um it's a question of do we want to tackle that now with this regulation? Um or do we want to kind of turn a blind eye to it for now? Um there's, there's a lot of complications with it, like you said, there's, there's, is it a campground? Is it called as a campground now because of the number of sites there are? Um do they allow RVs?
Are, are you talking about, is like, so I wanna make sure that we're kind of on the same page with the, the kind of situation that we're talking about. Are we talking about somebody that has like a camper, like a, like a trailer on their property essentially, that's like an ADU for these purposes? Or are we talking about like people who have like space where you can bring your own RVs in?
Yeah, this, this is the same kind of thing, all of that. There are situations where people are renting out RVs right now, that's happening in the county. And then there are situations where people say, I've got a slot where you can come and put your RV and it's X dollars per night. Um and then there's people that have these fancy tents set up on platforms. They're renting those or people that are renting out yurts.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
I think in those situations, for me, I think it all comes back to what are they doing with their waste? So if you have one of those, like if you have a yurt, what is your, what is your bathroom situation? If you have a, you know, if you have a, a camper on there that you're renting out, what is your, what is your bathroom situation? So on and so forth, I, I think versus, my mind, when I was thinking about it is, I have a, uh, I have a place that I rent out. It has X amount of people, but my, my group has, you know, there's not room for four more people in the house. And so they show up with their tent in the yard and we're all having a good time camping out for the weekend, you know, on the shoreline.
We can bicycle this, actually, we can do it, uh, we're doing right now with, with stick-built structures. And with that, no allowance of uh, of tents and stuff to the outside for above the uh, the uh population limit as the septic. You know, if you're only allowed so many in per room, and then we can come back later to talk about RVs and stuff. And see if you wanna tag it onto this short-term rental or have it be something i- in on its own entity.
Yeah, cause I think that's, it's gonna be a different topic, be, just because a lot of the definitions, in the definitions at, at the state level, it doesn't say anything about RVs or tents. It's just about stick.
Yes, sir.
No, I think your, your definition that's up there is good. Because it defines it and it chokes it down to a dwelling unit or portion thereof and, and does not, specifically does not mention some other things. So I think it's easy to bifurcate this, this particular juncture.
And if we did though, we should actually spell it out in there though, that this is for the stick-built buildings and, and.
You can always say does not include or items or um types not included in this definition.
Or do we wanna say tents and the like, uh, uh, population is included in the, uh, population allowance? For example, you got, you got mom and dad sitting there and little Johnny and, and their brother wants to go camp out in the yard. But yet they're still underneath uh four people in the household.
So I hope mom and dad aren't charging.
Yeah, yeah. But the other person is, the other person is. So you know, we can say this does not, we don't have to say it does include those camps, this is for the stick-built. Uh and the restrictions on population will be based further on uh in our, our examples of how many people can be in a dwelling.
I, I think the use of the term dwelling unit solves that.
Okay.
You know, because you, you wanna say stick-built, well, what if it's a modular home? So if you, if you use dwelling unit, it's already defined in, in our CW, so.
Okay, and uh how would you recommend that we uh make sure that, uh, cause we'll deal with that part in a little bit just shortly. That it's included in there that that population, regardless of whether you have a tent or something outside.
Do you wanna go guests, guests do not exceed, um recommended?
Recommended occupancy, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that'll also keep, cause some of them run for, like I said, a wedding and they don't actually stay there. There'll be a few people that stay there the night.
But they're still using the septic.
Yeah. Uh clear as mud on that one?
Yes, yes, thank you.
But you have an idea where to go with it to help us, cause well, again, we're just putting together a straw dog right now. So you hear our conversation, you can help us to get the words we need. Okay, what other section, where you, where you wanna go next, guys?
Um let's go, well, well, it's not gonna scroll much actually, maybe a little, but let me scroll here. So the next thing we have after definition and the type is, um, do we wanna think about um limits of how many, how many short-term rentals we have per parcel?
I, per, per parcel?
Per parcel, cause yeah, cause right now, like liberal area, you can have your main residence and you can have an ADU. So um there's nothing in the code currently that
So, um, there's nothing in the code currently that doesn't say, uh, you could, I mean, you could potentially rent out both of those.
I, I would rather keep it personally, I, I would rather keep it on the ability to service, uh, the people that are there. So if you've got, cuz there's some homes where you'll have an ADU that's on the same septic system. If it's, if it's on a four-bedroom septic, then it should be looked at as a four-bedroom. If it's two separate septic systems, which some of these ADUs have their own septic system, we'll call it ADU, but I just know there's two homes on there. And there's two separate septic systems, I think we need to look at them as a septic system.
Okay, so more based on that.
Well, right now, I'm, I'm looking at the other commissioners to see what they're thinking first, sorry.
Sorry.
It's okay.
What do we have in our code right now regarding ADUs? As far as being hooked up, hooked up to septic and?
I believe they have to have the rule either if you have septic, you have two units, for instance, and it's a four-bedroom septic, you're allowed to have two or three in the main house, and one in the other, or some variation of.
So still, you cannot go higher than what the septic is.
Correct, and Ian, I, I speak to that, and that could, I mean, that's the.
But then on top of that, we do have parcels that have more than one septic on them. I know that for sure, so.
Yeah, you can, there's no limit on the number of septic systems you can have in your property, it's an ADU setup. You can have twenty septic systems.
Well, I'm not sure, I need a restriction on how many can be on a parcel number.
Yeah, I mean, again, a lot of this for me is just gonna come back to ability to serve it.
Same.
I mean, I think that's the, that's the key for me.
It sounds like it's a no from us for limitation based on parcel number, uh, but it will be versus ability to serve.
Okay, okay. So, and, um, then the next one is application. Um, the regulations, are we talking countywide? Do, do you want this applied to the UGA and for residents of the UGAs, or are we just looking at the rural areas?
I, personally, I think countywide, um, just because, you know, in the, in the rural parts of the county, the. You know, the issue might be more septic service versus other things. But in the urban growth areas, it may be more, uh, you know, the parking issues or other, other sort of. You know, noise or ancillary issues that come with it, so I, I would, my preference would be to make this applicable countywide.
That'd be my preference as well, but we will run into problems when we're thinking about that, cuz the UGAs that may have a sep- a sewer system. Uh, we're gonna have to find a different way to limit population in the home than just septic. A house in, in Belfair, for example.
Also, uh, wouldn't apply in the city of Shelton, right?
Yeah, and it doesn't apply in the city of Shelton, but in the Shelton UGA.
Yes. So we need, so we need, um, language regard, regarding the sewer, the sewer system as well?
That, that'll probably be figured out when it comes time for population, cuz we might wanna just consider setting it up for septic for the population that we have. And applying it per room or something on a different code for inside the urban growth area.
Okay.
But uniformity seems to be an important thing, it sounds like, for the whole county, so we keep it simple. If we start giving different things for different areas all the way around, then it'll never get enforced. And I, one of the important parts of this is going to be enforcement and how we go about it, to me.
Hi, this is Kel.
Hi, Kel.
Hey, um, yeah, that's a good point, Commissioner, and I, in speaking with Grace Harbor, who has.
Adopted short-term rental regulations. They initially had different set of rules for their sewer customers, uh, and then changed it back to the, um, the same as septic. So two people per bedroom plus two people. And that just aligned with parking standards and other things as well, and, um. And they found that allowing more folks just because of the sewer was not a good idea, so I'm just throwing that out there.
If it's, if, if it's safe and acceptable for a septic, chances are it'll be the same for sewers, so I'd rather err on the side of that.
With that, with that being said, though, we also know, I'm also aware, that we have some homes that may have three bedrooms and only have a septic system that was actually built for one. And just because they have these rooms now, they didn't have them when it was built or accepted, we want to make sure that we follow some guideline according to the septic system. For those in the rural area. I'm looking over here for head nods, in case anybody says, we got experts in the corner.
That's a good point, because that section just says we're gonna calculate it based on bedrooms.
Yeah.
And so we might want to add into that that it's based on number of bedrooms that the septic system approved for, or add some.
Or exactly how, how you have written within.
Which does say that.
Yeah, but you can also just add, or, uh, capacity of septic, whichever is least.
Okay, so there's, we need some clarifying language to make sure people fit on, um, once approved. I thought that's just the two.
Thank you.
Okay, um. So the next one, um. Residential solid waste, um, so I know that was, um, seemed like a big issue.
I think that's an absolute. One of the things that I am gonna agree with, we have to have, they have to have a plan. Whatever they, if they're gonna be, uh, renting these out, we want a complete structure of a plan from them. And these plans will have to check off certain boxes, one of them showing that waste must be able to be removed from there, because it is a commercial enterprise, no matter how we look at it. Or they show how they will have it removed with some type of, uh, of documentation or proof from receipts or something, but it has to be done.
Okay.
Well, that was just me talking again, sorry. Uh, I'm looking, I say what I'm doing, and I look at the commissioners to see what they're thinking, and then, uh, I have Ian with a hand up, but first let me just see what the commissioners were thinking.
I mean, I, I, I would probably even lean towards requiring curbside, um, for these types of places. I, I, to, to limit self-hauling.
Cuz I know there are places out in like Matlock and stuff where they're actually out in the woods, and they're not gonna be able to get it, but I know that they have it out there, cuz people that wanna go to really secluded places. But.
They don't have garbage service, Commissioner?
Not always, uh, not in the far reaches of the, if you live down a, you know, a dirt road that's a couple miles, sometimes they don't go down there. Sometimes they do, but sometimes they just like don't. Especially if you're the only one down there. But, again, that's, I'm just saying that, doesn't mean we can't require it. What do you think?
I think we have to do something, cuz I don't want them just dumping their garbage in the woods like it's happening.
Do you want it as required? And again, this is just.
What I would like, it is just proof that, that it's being handled in some way, so you see, do they have a, a bin out there that they dump after their clients or visitors have, have been there? Their guests? You know, how do you, how do you enforce? I think it comes, comes down to enforcement, too, how do we enforce this?
That's the problem I'm seeing with it, cuz I don't want, every time we have to send the staff out, that's money, and that's time, and then that takes away from being able to do something else with it. But being able to prove it. In the beginning with the straw dog, I can go along with requiring it for now, but I'd love to see you write a provision in there that also says, uh. Some way of proving that they have, uh, a way of getting rid of it, and it must show how it's disposed of one way or the other in their plan.
Can't you say something like, in the event of no curbside service, uh, proof of disposal is required, or something like that?
On a weekly basis, or, yes, go ahead, Ian.
What we do now with solid waste cases, where they have issues with, with trash disposal. We will require them to show us proof of disposal at, like, L L, because they'll get a receipt for, for taking their trash there. If it's becoming a, a regular problem, we'll say, you have to show us that you probably disposed of this, and you just would dump it around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, that's my fear, I, I just don't want, like, the septic, I, my, my concerns are the shoreline, the septic, the garbage, and, I mean.
Well, even if we do, we have to put some type of time limit on it, where they have to be able to show, uh, a receipt for weekly, uh, or something if we did that. Because it would do no good if they had to do it monthly, and then because of what they're doing, they've had all these people there, and they have rats or everything. So can you put that together both ways for us, please?
Yes.
Would, um, would it be possible to maybe have a conversation with Mason County Garbage to see if they would provide a waiver, or a letter that they don't provide? Curbside?
In these, in certain areas?
Yeah. You know, if somebody is going through this process, that they could, they could present the letter.
So required preference, but if no services available, proof on a weekly basis of, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, something like that, I mean, I think, you know, just as long as we can legitimately identify that they don't get curbsides, or they can't get curbside.
But if they can, it's required.
Yeah.
Did you hear all that?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay, what else you got?
Um, and then, um, the initial fire safety and health inspection prior to permitting, um.
Personally, I think that's absolutely, if we're gonna call it a business, act like it's a business with people and families, they're gonna rely on the fact that that business has, was checked out to make sure it's at least in some way safe. Uh, because if, if it can't pass a fire inspection, we have no business putting the people in there as a business. So I think it's an absolute necessity at some point, where you have some of this stuff in there about being grandfathered, they may be the ones that can be opened while it's still looked, but within six months, it has to have been inspected. And I do think that, uh, I don't know that we have to have a fee for that, as much as the initial yearly fee should at least include that, because it is time and it's money, and it has to pay to get it done. We don't want it not done because it's not paid for. That's what I think.
I agree with that.
They both agree with that, did that make sense to you?
It does, yes.
Okay.
I don't tell you how many. I know you were, um, a little worried about the capacity, did, um, do inspections on all of those, but, um.
Well, I can tell you where I'm at on that, and that's jumping way ahead. I think that there needs to be an initial fee large enough that will cover, uh, the idea of having these inspectors go out there, so it actually pays for a position. A full position to be able to do it, and I think there should be a small fee for every day's rental, well, and I know that, that's not gonna be popular with people, but, and I'm talking tiny, maybe two dollars. But that guarantees that we have the ability to actually put these things out there, get them inspected, and the ability to grow and, uh, have a couple of dollars to put together whatever we're gonna find we're gonna need as we get going. And they're already paying a tax through certain things, through, uh, VRBOs and stuff like that. To have a fee of, you know, perhaps a dollar, two dollars per night, does not seem like a big thing to me. The only problem is, is collecting the money and what that looks like, but if you're getting a permit, you have to show your records, that's part of it, too. That's what I think.
I, 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 I agree with that, and I think the other, the other part of this is, is going to be, you know, the additional research that it takes to determine how many of these we have currently, like what present status is. And that'll determine, I mean, that, you know, what does it cost to do the inspections, and then, uh, you know, a little bit of, a little bit of math, and you kinda can arrive at what, what the appropriate permitting fee would be. And then that has to be done on a, you know, annual basis or whatever you have outlined here, I think. We, you know, we have to, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take a loss on this, um, but we wanna make sure that what we're coming up with covers the inspections that need to happen.
Yeah, I wanna keep it low enough to where we don't crush them and hurt them, I, but it has to pay for itself and a little extra, cuz there's things we're not gonna know that we need to know. So it has to pay just a little bit more, that's my thinking, what do you think? Now, how many did you say that we think we have in the county right now?
Um, well, we initially had, when we were researching companies that, uh, do the tracking of these, um, short-term rental on, on different platforms. They, back in, I think it was twenty twenty-two, maybe the end of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, they, they sent approximately eleven hundred.
Well, just looking at the, the taxes that we get. I, I would say that's probably about right.
If you had, if you only had eleven hundred and your, your annual fee was, I mean.
Yeah, I, I was thinking three fifty initially, especially because of the, uh, of the fire marshal and stuff, cuz it's not just having the inspector. It's not having, you gotta, we gotta pay for the person to sign him up, we gotta pay for the person to call up and still do the verification, and then you have your inspector, and then you have fire for each and every single unit that they go out there. Of which some of those might be able to be done with a contract with the local fire departments, as we already have them go out with certain things, looking at businesses in Belfair, looking for wires and things like that. What do you think, go ahead?
Well, that would, that would be an option, um, we also have the building inspectors going out daily throughout the county, so. Um, I can't, I don't wanna speak for them, but, um, I don't see any reason why, you know, those inspections could not be added to those that are assigned to them on a daily basis. I mean, essentially, they're already looking for smoke detectors and fire extinguishers a lot of times when they're going out to file buildings and residential properties anyways, so.
And they're already on route.
And they're already in route, so, I mean, that's, that's a very practical alternative option as well.
What's your turnaround time? So you, you're, you head out, you're built, so right now, you're not, um, inspecting the, the short-term rentals, right?
Correct.
So how?
I would say right now, our inspection loads are pretty full for the inspectors that are out in the field, along with balancing, you know, returning phone calls, plan reviews, all the elements that, um, don't feel field work, but involve staff time.
Right.
Uh, especially the initial, or the initial, excuse me, inspection of eleven hundred or so, that would definitely require.
All at once?
Uh, yes, additional staff.
Yeah.
And I would hate to kinda try to juggle both, we got the short-term rentals, and then we have the individuals that are moving their project forward and so on, and, uh, who gets the attention there and doesn't get ignored, so.
What I would like to see is, is after we give the forward, you know, to go, to go ahead, is a projection from all the departments as to how much, how much more staff? Would it take to be able to enforce and to inspect, and, cuz this is, this is not, our staff is busy now. And so I just wanna make sure that, that we're not overloading.
Well, I would hope we have, uh, at bare minimum, one person paid for and designated specifically for this purpose. They, if they don't have work, they could do other things, but, uh, one person, this will take up a lot of time if they were constantly working it through the year.
So we have to determine which department that one staff would be best suited for?
It'd probably be under the building department, I would automatically say inspectors or other.
Yeah. And then the, the support staff that'll go with that, but that could be integrated with, kind of, we'll be up to certain extent.
I mean, I, I think that's, I think that's part of where we need to end up here, but we're talking about a fee schedule.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it is, there is, I mean, my assumption on this isn't that it's gonna be present-day staffing that's gonna handle a program like this, I mean, there would need to be. There would need to be a conversation about FTEs in order to do this work, I mean, that's, you know, I think that should be an obvious.
Well, in some of the other counties, they had so many different fees that they haven't broke down in so many different ways. I, myself, I like simplicity of it, I, that's why, when I had thought about it before and I'm looking at it, you have some of these here that are five hundred dollar permit fees and the like, there's even, uh, uh, other things that they add on, as high as twenty-two seventy. I, I just like the simplicity of it, I think that it would generate enough money at three hundred and fifty dollars per, from what I'm seeing, it's just a, a straw dog to work with. And then, uh, a two dollar per, per night addition will cover anything we need for growth, but even the three fifty, if we were to collect it from everybody, which I'm not sure we can. Just because they're telling me I got eleven hundred doesn't mean we're gonna collect from eleven hundred. We may collect from nine hundred or eight hundred, uh, and we have to work on collecting the others. But i- if we were to collect from, uh, you know, even one thousand, which I think is more than eleven hundred now, uh, that's three hundred and fifty thousand, that goes a long way with covering. People gotta understand, not only we have employee, but you have all their benefits and everything, too, it becomes a lot. You start talking to employees, it becomes even a lot more. Then you start talking about contracting out, because in the beginning, I don't know that our staff could even take that on, we'd have to contract out the ones that already existed with probably, uh, other fire departments, stuff like that. And we've done stuff like that with them in the past, and that's through a contract, which again costs money, especially when it first starts. So I just wanna make sure that, uh, we get enough and, and not kill them, I don't think it would have a great impact on them to do three fifty as their, uh, initial fee. But again, remembering there's other staff involved that are gonna eat that, the rest of that. You're thinking, Mark, I, I, hold on one second, was I see Mark thinking?
I've got, I've got, um, Shalane, um, the director, deputy director of Shalane County is in charge of the, um, short-term rental program there. And they were initially told when they started their program that they had about thirteen hundred in something, um, short-term rentals, and they currently have, um. To support their program, they have two, two texts, so they do the permitting and, and a plan review. Um, but they have, um, so they have two techs, but, uh, sorry, two and a half, two and a half. So, um, one of those does half, half of their time, um, code enforcement. And then they, they do, um, they do work with their, their other code enforcement officers, they officers as well. Um, but they do have, um, one of those persons that is also a tech, half of their time is, is spent doing enforcement as well. Um, and then, um, like I said, with the, the, the fire marshal, they, they started to implement that hundred dollar fee, which has provided them, um, she, she indicated that it, it provided them another position to help with those inspections. Um, no gosh, there is something else that I. And, and they do also utilize, I think it's Deckard, um, Deckard Technologies. Um, and that, they, they have their twenty-four hour hotline where people call in, um, if they have a complaint. And that company helps to verify if it's a valid, if it's a valid complaint. And then, once they verify that it's a valid complaint, it gets passed on, along to the code enforcement, um, with.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. The gentleman sitting in the room with us now actually brought up the idea of contracting some of that stuff out, that there's entities to contract out. I'd like to look at and see what kind of benefits they bring and how, what that would look like.
There are programs out there.
I actually even have a name, cause he said, you sent me a, a name, right?
I did.
Yeah, I, I even have a name I'll forward over to you, uh, that does this stuff. After our last meeting, he, we asked him for it and he actually sent it to the email.
I actually said.
A lot of times it don't happen.
I just wanted to.
Hold on, Mark, Mark wanted to say something. I'm dying to hear what he's got to say.
I was just trying to estimate, you know, the, the three hundred and fifty, um, dollars. And is that an annual fee?
Yes.
So that plus, if you did two dollars per day, I mean, I, I would imagine that there's a rental season out there for the majority of these things to occur, so, um, would it be legitimate to say ninety to a hundred and twenty days out of the year? Each one of those is gonna have a nightly stay, so. Yeah, so I mean, a hundred and eighty. You could fund some of those positions, but I also was thinking about, um, the, the research that Kel had done on some of the, um, services out there that kind of helped provide the things that Marissa was just talking about, so.
And that, like I said, that was.
So there's a cost to those.
That was sent to me by the citizen in, in the room now, and I'll get that over to everybody. So right now, that gives you a structure where we think that how this would be paid for and how it would go, uh, go into play. Uh, we don't know exactly what it is because we don't have it in front of us, but it's a good straw dog to start with. Can't, sorry. Once we move into the commission. Okay, so, uh, what else are you thinking next?
No, actually, I'm now, the point is the commissioners have anything, um, additional that they wanna discuss, um, as conversation, um, I'm open for that.
I'd love to talk about some of the restrictions that we're talking about, uh, and the things that we'd like to see, such as, you know, so many per room, uh, such as, uh, I do believe that, uh, I like the idea of having the operator on site, but I see where that's not always possible and I'm good with that. But the idea that somebody, I, I see in one of your recommendations that within three hours, I think that's way too long. There should be somebody close enough that can have an impact within an hour. When they're blocking all the neighbors' driveways, something has to be done about it immediately. And that would be on the, on the, the back of the actual property owner. They can charge whatever fee they want for doing it or however. But if they're blocking it, uh, you need it done right away. So they have to have either a manager of some sorts within a certain amount of time, uh, in order to enforce what we're, what we're saying. That's what I think. What do you guys think about that?
Uh, I was, I was okay with the three hours, um, but I do think that they have, they have a lot of these places around by people that are even out of state.
Yeah.
And so I think they have to have, they absolutely have to have a designated local point of contact. I mean, I think that's gotta be a given.
Okay, uh, maybe that's what we saw before. It was a local point of contact within one hour away. Is that what I read before? I've got something in my mind. That's what I was.
There are some, there are some that.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I saw that. So can you make, uh, put something together that looks like that so we can see what that looks like later?
Yes.
Permit, uh, uh, expirations, I do believe it should be yearly.
I agree with that.
Okay, we have agreement across it. I do believe documentation, uh, is important for what they are, who they are, what they're doing. Um, I also believe that documentation is important when it comes to, if they're gonna do it, we gotta have a complete plan. It's gotta be documented where the fire extinguishers are, how many people can do it, what, and it should be, if, if at all posted for everybody that's there. Cause we can't go outside of that. And then I also believe that there has to be a fine system. I don't know that I can agree with that three, uh, three things and you're out because the truth matters. I wish you could have that kind of control, whether or not. Uh, I think it should be tiered. Uh, this event happens, this event happens, uh, and there's a fine, but after a certain amount, then it comes up for review. And if it's found to be, uh, uh, willful or they, they don't care or they're not enforcing or whatever, that it can be removed. And I think it should be a little strict, just not as strict as three offenses and you're out.
Yeah, Marissa, I just sent you a, it's Westport's code for the, for STRs. And they have the first violation of this chapter per property per violation type, noise, parking, et cetera. In a twelve-month rolling period may be considered a warning. The second violation per property per violation type shall be punishable by a two hundred and fifty dollar fine. Third and each additional violation within a twelve-month period shall be punishable with a five hundred dollar fine. A criminal misdemeanor enter suspension or revocation of a issued vacation rental dwelling permit. So we might wanna consider something like that as we.
I like it. I just like it a little bit stronger than that. But I like it. That, that, that's a good straw dog to work with.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to get Tim's opinion on, on the, the misdemeanor or criminal misdemeanor.
Well, I meant more for the revocation.
For, for the revocation?
Yeah, just being able to revoke it at that point. Uh, I wasn't thinking about the misdemeanor aspect yet of that. There's other stuff that I'm looking at, looking at, but that's.
Yeah, I don't know how to get the misdemeanor.
Send them in front of the hearing examiner.
Yeah. Well, we, we as a county, as I've been looking, we have the ability to do that. But again, we're not, we have no preparation how to deal with it yet, if we did. But I, I, I like that as a straw dog, but I like it stronger, uh, stricter because especially for the first years, we're gonna have those that are gonna just say F you and we're gonna need to react on them quickly. Uh, if they're willing to work, we work. If they're not, then we don't. It's up to them. But three is too strict.
All right, I'll, I'll take a look at that. Thank you.
You might also wanna consider in the fee schedule, having reinspection fees written right into it.
Right.
Agreed.
That those start adding up as well and they can be, and that can provide some motivation for them to become into compliance.
Agreed. Reinspection fee, if you didn't hear that, is an important tool.
And that's actually on the, the Westport site as well. And their inspect, reinspection fee is a hundred and fifty dollars.
And I'm, I'm telling you, uh, two things are very important to me is that parking issue. Uh, it's very important because I know that it affects so many of the people that call me. Also, I don't know how to put it in there, but the different things that they're doing on the beaches. Uh, also another one is if they're gonna enter into the neighbor's premises, that can't happen either, but we know it happens. They actually go in, use the restroom and, and people get screamed at and there it is. But somebody's gotta keep control of it. And if they can't, yes. And if they can't control it, then maybe they can't have one. We're only here because it got out of control. If it, if it was on perfect control already, you wouldn't be here, I don't think. I wouldn't care if it didn't affect the other people. But no, they literally do. And it happens more often than you think. The first time I heard it, I thought, I thought it was a one-off, but then over the years, I've heard a lot more than that. Just recently, who was it that was here that had that? Was that, you had, that happened? Somebody just had it here too. That was here last, or two weeks ago. So it's, it's a lot more common than we know. People suck sometimes.
It's about to, it's about to ramp up again.
Yeah.
Lots of respect.
So the, so the, uh, operator of the, the short-term rental, um, would have rules and regulations posted, uh, that they have to notify them, but the, are we gonna hold the operator accountable for the actions of their renters then?
Yes, yes, very much so. Especially if you're not on site. You see, it's one thing that gentleman that was sitting here who's on site. If something happens, he's gonna go and handle it. So I expect my staff automatically look at it and say, you know what? You're doing your job and you're working with it. We're just gonna let this go. You're doing this. Or they say, you know, this is the fourth time. We gotta do something. I would expect them to have a lean C to do something like that. But you have other ones that are not on site. I can think of one right now that I got a call on this morning, not because of this, just because that literally, uh, they don't even, they don't live in the state at all. They purchased this place so that they could use it a couple of times. And then they rent it out constantly. Right now, they just entered into a contract apparently with, uh, somebody that owns restaurants or something because they're coming in, renting it and not even using it during the day. They're coming in in the night and taking all the clams and stuff by huge coolers off the beach. And they're taking it to their restaurants and stuff. And the owner knows this, but they're not there to do anything about it anyway. And so nobody knows what to do. And then you call the sheriff. The sheriff can't just go out and do it. You gotta have the right person at DNR, Fish and Wildlife. It's a real pain. Uh, but something like that, the owner knows and they should have been shut down immediately. Such, if you're aware of violations of the law, uh, so egregious that it is truly a violation, uh, at some point, that's where you'd have two or three.
And I think too, the other part of that is by holding the property owners accountable, if they're listing on VRBO or Airbnb or ever other ones, they also have mechanisms and to, to have recourse against the renter as well. Through that, you know, because there's agreements that you sign on to through, through those processes and, and unfortunately for us, based on not having any of our own ordinances in place, I mean, it is kind of the honor system and, and, you know, we're not, we're not having any kind of oversight and enforcement, but I think the renter would have, you know, the, the ability to have some recourse. They could recoup fees. People can get banned from using those.
Sure.
Those, uh, at, you know, the.
Site.
The facility, yeah.
And, and they already do. Like I talked about that one where they went to court. So literally, there's a five hundred dollar fine for the person that pulled over and just parked in their driveway. It happens immediately. It's on their credit card. They signed saying that it will happen to your credit card as soon as, if you do it. That's the way it's working now. So there's opportunities there. And with, uh, this conversation, something else that just hit me, the one that's gonna actually help us enforce it is gonna be those that are calling in to complain about it. And we were talking about having the, uh, three hundred feet to be notified. When we notify these people, if we do this, we need to notify them what their rights are and who to call. Not just notifying that it's happening, but here's what your rights are. If your driveway is blocked, you can call this number. If such and such, and, you know, that's, this number to get it done, this number for complaint to the county. Cause after somebody complains, we have to do something immediately about it.
And that's where I think you did this service that we were talking about before steps in, right?
Yeah, I'd be, I'm really looking forward to finding out more about the services that you presented to us, cause it may make things a lot easier for us, especially when their pros are doing it all the time. And then we can have our staff doing the media hands-on. It'd be nice to see, but we'll look at it. Max, let's see, yeah. All of the above you're looking at. I'd love to see how we can break it down though. Uh, I agree that we should look at that, then like the max occupancy limit. Uh, maybe a brief breakdown of what determines the occupancy limit. Uh, under how many vehicles? What determines the vehicles? And that could be on the plan. If a person turns in their plan and they have to turn in their plan to get their permit, they show where they have parking for such and such vehicles. Oddly enough, they'll show you where they have parking for ten, but they should only have three there. Because that's what the, the, uh, uh, population allowance will be.
Yeah, I drove past one this weekend in my own neighborhood and, um, you guys have been up Beach Drive, uh, you know, heading into Alderbrook. There's one on the hill and I mean, it was, there were cars stacked on both sides of, you know, and that's a, I mean, that's a curvy road. So, I mean, it's, you know, people walk that and hike it and everything and you have limited line of sight when that's happening.
It's nice to have places like that, but again, you're putting on your pressure on your neighbor. I'm very much a property rights advocate. I wanna be able, do whatever they can. But at the same time, they can't impact their neighbor and their enjoyment of their property, their life. And if you're going down that, that road, what happens with your wife when she's going, trying to take that curve at night and those cars are there? Why would we put them at risk? They don't have the right to. That's so.
Yeah, I, I counted ten cars.
Yeah.
And that, there's no way that that house is.
And again, that's probably not as uncommon as you think.
They don't have a, a ten-bedroom septic system?
Not, not that I know of.
They're common.
But, but that's common. People say, hey, let's just go get, uh, a VRBO and we'll have the whole family, better family reunion. And that's what we do. But at the same time, if, if there's places that can handle that, it's one thing, but if they can't, they can't. And so we need to take that into consideration. Whatever we do, there should also be an appeal process though. So we have somebody that makes a decision that it should be this way, this way. There should be some way to appeal it. Uh, so please look at options for that.
Yeah, I think we have that in here for, um, yeah, Marissa, could you maybe walk through what that process is based on current code?
Um, one second here. Let me go over to our, it's in title fifteen, so let me pull that up. I, I unfortunately don't have a memory of what you're talking about.
You don't have it memorized?
So bear with me, um, I'm pulling it up here.
Oh, it's a very, listen, appeals. Shall we present appeals process?
And just so you know, some of the things we're looking at, like Pacific County and stuff, they have eight hundred dollar license fees and so we're, I, I think we're being realistic to allow them to continue to go. We're picking only what we need, not what we can. Uh, if we were to keep it at the rates we're talking about.
I have, you know, the, the title fifteen.
Okay. I cannot see it, that's for sure.
I wish I had Jamie on here, she's an expert.
Can you give us a brief reading of what you're saying?
So we have, um, warning notice, so prior to any enforcement action.
Okay.
And at, and at the option of the review authority, a warning notice may be issued. So this is to inform parties of practices which constitute or will constitute a violation of the development code or other development regulation as incorporated by reference and may specify the corrective action. This warning notice may be sent by certified registered mail, posted on site or delivered by other means. And then the party shall respond to the county within twenty days of the postmark posting on site or delivery. And then next step would be, so this has notice of civil violation. It's not gonna be, okay, cause we have hearing examiner. So a notice of civil violation may be issued and served upon a person if any activity by or at the direction of that person is, has been or may be taken in violation of the applicable codes under fifteen oh three point zero zero five. A landowner, tenant or contractor may each be held separately and joint and severely responsible for violations of applicable codes and regulations. So then we have the notice of that civil violation, um, shall be being served and shall be effective when posted at the location and or delivered to any person at the location and or mailed first class to the owner or other person having responsibility for the location and not returned. So then it has, it just goes through what's in the content of the civil violation. And then remedial action, the reviewing authority may require any action reasonably calculated to correct or abate the violation, including but not limited to replacement, repair, supplementation, revegetation, restoration, um. And then we go to hearing before hearing examiner. So.
Another way, another way to simplify it out.
Simplify it out is to create our own little thing.
For example, the, uh, building department, health department and administrator review.
I think appeals might be fifteen eleven two section. That's what I was just looking at.
Yeah.
For appeal, it looks like fifteen eleven addresses.
What does, uh, fifteen eleven say for the appeal?
Um, appeal of administrative interpretation decision.
Do the hearing.
So.
Dollars. That does. That doesn't, uh, yeah, so I'm thinking of an actual appeal. If, if they're to revoke it, they should have the ability to have some type of appeal, and you can go through for maybe an amount of five hundred dollars, you can have a, a, an actual appeal to that three body.
So you're saying put in a, a preliminary appeals.
Yeah.
Body, and then if they substantiate it, then they could still go to the hearings examiner?
Yes. Because, the reason why I'm saying that is, some of it is, no matter who you are, you're gonna have attitude. That's just one of the things we deal with in our, in our business, attitude on both sides of it. Uh, to be able to cut that off short is always better, uh, but at the same time, I want quicker action. We all know from all the stuff that we deal with, we have so many things that there's no action on. If we do it, and they actually say you're closed, and I want them to be able to do that, because they violated this, this, and this, that quick appeal can get, make sure that there's nothing personal, so drastic, yes.
So, uh, just using the example, you get a complaint of a septic violation, it gets stuck well enough by the county. Cause we've had that a couple times this last winter. The inspector, whoever takes the call, makes the call. The appeal process is it goes to me, then the health officer, then the board of health. That's the current process that's in place.
And that's for a septic violation?
It's for any kinda health. I just use septic as, as an example.
Well, see, I, I think automatically you should go to the director of the department as a number one, and then, you know, especially for closure, it goes to the, if they wanna pay five hundred dollars, they can go to that three-person panel health, uh, building planning and administrator, and that keeps. And again, this is just straw dog stuff. This isn't the code. We're just talking about, are you guys okay with maybe looking at putting that in temporarily, as something to look at?
Well, fifteen thirteen zero two zero already talks about penalties, and, and, and then very similar what already is. I mean, it's what we have and what we've been talking about, so I don't know. If you wanna take a look at that, it's C and D.
But I think we're gonna have a lot of different penalties that didn't exist before that we're dealing with with this. And, uh, I'd like to see them to be able to have the actions specific to this, personally, specific to this category. Uh, the more separate we can keep this B R B O, the less chance it's gonna get caught in the minutia of all the other stuff that we do.
Well, I also like to, you know, keep it simple, so if it's, if it's, if it affects one department or one type of penalty, or I, I'd rather have it be very, very uniform.
Okay, and I'll say it in a different manner, so far that doesn't work.
Did you read it?
No, I mean, our, just ourselves, how we do it, it just doesn't work.
Well, it's in our code, but.
I know.
Does it, is it enforced? Just because, do we have the people who do it? That's where, yeah.
So, but we can leave it out, or we can put it in for a straw dog. It doesn't mean you have to pass it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm good looking at some options. I mean, I think let's, Marissa, I think is gonna also have a conversation with the prosecutor's office on, on some of the penalties anyway, and, you know, they might have some recommendations on a, you know, what would be allowable, and.
All right, what else do you have? Oh, I wanna hit one, the, the fire, not just the yearly fire, but if they're gonna have, uh, people in there, they need to make sure their fire extinguishers are done every single year, and that violation of that is a serious violation. Not just, that's a serious one. If you have fire extinguishers that aren't up to date and aren't working, and you're actually housing people, cause we're not gonna make them put sprinkler systems in, and if they tried to build something right now to hold, to hold, uh, people for residence, that's what we would require from a building. Uh, but since we're not gonna be there, we need to make sure those are completely up to date, and that there's enough of them per.
And that was already a recommendation I made to Marissa.
And you also said carbon relaxant.
Correct.
Yep.
And also, also, uh, something that was received very favorably by all the fire districts was, there's a big number that before anybody has a fire, if there's a fire pit on the property, they have to call to make sure it's, there's not a permit in effect. Cause most of these people probably come out of town, have no clue, uh, that those kinda things occur here.
And we just, a part of the, the plans would require that to be posted separately.
It was just a little call of D N Rs, suggestions too.
What else are you thinking, guys?
So, um, I guess maybe just a question for Marissa. Um, based on the feedback that you've gotten today, you kinda maybe walk us through next steps, and when, you know, I, I, I don't know how much more input you need from us before we consider sending it to the planning commission to have their own opportunity to review the, um, you know, review the ordinance and those kinds of things?
Um, well, I would say the next step would be to take it to the planning advisory commission. I would say, um, that the next opportunity I have is June, um, but I, I wanted to give the, um, the commissioners, um, a little bit of an opportunity if they need to email me or, uh, provide, if, and if they have any other comments other than what's they provided at this meeting. Um, I could come back with a, a deadline when I would need those comments, um, so I could, um, start refining this according to what you said during this meeting, what may be in those comments, and bring that version to the pack, for them to start, um, discussing as well.
Yeah, that, that sounds great, and, uh, at that point, they would also, they would also be able to take public comment and testimony as well?
Yes, that, correct, yes.
Okay. Any further, uh, discussion? Then, uh, staff, anything further you'd like us to consider while we're sitting here before we adjourn?
Um, I, I think you gave me a lot to work with and refine, and, um, if you, like I said, if you have anything else, um, just shoot me an email, or, um, and I can also include that, um, for review as well for the pack.
Okay, I have, Dave Wyndham has something to say. Dave?
So, a, a lot of this really falls under the jurisdiction of health officer. So we need to bring that into account as well. We, we don't wanna have it have separate code for rentals that's separate in the health code from the rest of our health code, um, so I would keep that in mind.
So you'll work with Marissa and Kel to coordinate that review?
Yeah.
And get the numbers per bedroom, per septic, for, cause that's what, one of the things I really wanna see.
Yeah. I mean, if for a septic violation, the, the health officer gotta shut the occupancy down that day. And actually, we've done that, so.
If they're around.
It's that, if they're around, but then use that step in if they're not, right?
Well, we've, we've done that a couple times here. We've, we've posted now, I can see, on, uh, of your view.
That day.
Because of chronic issues with, with that two three one, so.
That's good to hear.
Okay, on Zoom out there, is there, on, on, on directors and people that are working for the county, is there anybody that had any last comment? If so, unmute yourself and say your name. I see none. Nobody else? Again, you're good, you're good, you're good, you're good? Okay. Commissioners?
Move we adjourn.
It has a move, a second we adjourn here, no objection, we are adjourned. But we could, this is what do you think you was at?